Okay. Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council and we're conducting today's work session via teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City YouTube channel. Since City Hall is closed to the public, we're making our meetings accessible to the public as possible. As a reminder, our work session give the council an opportunity to review items on today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. And these meetings are informal and no official action are taken. And our agenda items for today, we have a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Federation to sponsor a fishing tournament that will be held at the Gaston Couche landing on January the 16th, 2021. We have item 10, a resolution authorizing agreement with the Bass Federation Corporation to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held at the Gaston Couche landing on February the 13th, 2021. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Nation to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held at the Gaston Couche landing on March the 27th and the 28th, 2021. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Federation and Corporation to sponsor a fishing tournament that's going to be held at the Gaston Couche landing on April the 10th, 2021. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Trail to sponsor a fishing tournament that will be held at the Gaston Couche landing on June the 19th, 2021. Are there any questions or comments from the council members concerning today's agenda? There are no items routed for the council's consideration during the pre-council meeting. Does any council member have any further questions or comments? We'll take a break and we'll be back at 11 o'clock when we start our meet council meetings. So see you all at 11. Good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council and we're meeting today teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to an end. Call on City Councilwoman Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here. Councilwoman Williams. You're muted, but I see you raise that hand. Councilwoman Worthy.
Here.
Councilwoman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Here.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. Please bow for the invocation.
Councilman Reed, if you can turn your volume down a little bit.
All right, we'll give that a try. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with today. We thank you for each person who's participating in the Zoom meeting today. We pray that you would be with our mayor and our city council. I pray that you would guide the decisions that are made and that we would do everything for your honor and your glory. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and we thank you for all the blessings that you give us. These things we ask in your name, amen.
I'd like to begin this meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency Director, Deborah Gaither. Can you hear me now? And can you see me? I'm on a new device, so trying to get things correct. Okay, um, one quick update pending for later in the week. We have a severe weather threat. Thursday night into Friday morning, there's a big uncertainty on the timeframe. So we need to make sure that we keep a close eye on that. Any gatherings that people have for New Year's Eve may need to be adapted or canceled due to weather. We would hope that any that are being held are also adapted or canceled due to the global pandemic that we're currently under. The instability for the weather on Thursday night is going to be strong, straight line winds, for sure for us, for an extended amount of time. So, once the ground gets wet with those one to two inches of rain, the wind's going to take down trees and potentially power lines. There will be a wind advisory expected, but we have webinars tomorrow and Thursday. And if there's an update, we'll send everyone an email with that update on it and you can follow our social media pages to get those alerts. Okay, now, I want to say thank you to Michael Rogers for helping us last week to do our presentation and using the website and showing you all exactly what we were talking about. That was very helpful and it was helpful to some of our citizens too. But today's COVID current information that's listed on our website is not any better. I know most of you saw that the media released today that Alabama is fourth in the country in the highest infectious rate of COVID-19 and the spread fastest. We are only behind California, Arizona, and Tennessee. And when we say Alabama, we're talking about Edwah County too, to be more specific. Our new daily total is extreme every day, 100 or more. Testing has gone down, but the positivity rate has gone up. So that's, that's not a good sign, that testing has gone down, but positivity has gone up. Our positivity rate is at a critical level, it's at 30.6. 30.6. Also, we've had to update our death total to 91. It's 91 fellow citizens in Edwah County that we've lost since March. So, we just want to continue to remember their family and friends. Our, um, let me see, we'll make sure I get it right. Our days of doubling numbers is up 70.83%. That, that is just huge. Also, our positivity rate, where it had slightly gone downward last Tuesday, over the weekend, we have gone up and it's remained up at 55.3% up. That is our 14-day positivity rate. And that is out of 3,000 tests that were done. So that tells you a lot about that. Our hospitals are still at a critical level, that, you know, they're, they're managing, they're working hard, they're working overtime, nurses and doctors and pharmacists, phlebotomists, everybody that's there are really doing an awesome job to be put in the situation that we as citizens are putting them in. Appreciate them more than we'll ever be able to tell them. You will also see the, the kids' school camp that's not been updated, but that's because they're not in school right now. So, once our schools get back in and they start working together on that, then we'll get those updates again. Gadsden Regional has started vaccinations for their hospital staff who want the vaccines. That's for healthcare providers only and those that are employed with Gadsden Regional. That is not open to the general public yet. So, want to make sure the general public's aware of that, not leaving them out. We're just trying to get our frontline workers vaccinated. Also today, we started at the Edwah County Department of Public Health at 8:30, vaccinating our EMS providers, our survival flight crew, then also our Gadsden EMS first responders. Any group that does transport for dialysis, doctor's office visits, that would be potentially part of City of Gadsden Transportation and Edwah County Rural Transit. Also, we have those that would be providing a service to our water authorities for sewer and water, that provide sewer and water to our nursing homes or hospitals, those locations. So, we have five from City of Gadsden Water that are certified through the state to do that work. Anything that is a support to our hospitals, to our disaster response, to any individual, I mean, to our local response through our local municipalities and our county jurisdictions is, they have sent in a list and those individuals are going to start vaccinations. As of 10:00 a.m., they had already seen at the Edwah County Health Department 150 of our first responders for vaccines. So, that count should go up throughout the day. Our, the remainder of our first responders, responders, doctors' offices, healthcare providers will be vaccinated as scheduled right now on January the 7th. So, once we complete all of the first responders, front healthcare line providers, then we will be able to move on to some of our other groups. Those will be groups like our nursing homes and assisted livings are, are working with a contract through public health to receive theirs through CVS and Walgreens. So, they're working closely with them to make sure those state-approved facilities are getting that. The others will be, um, such as our homeless Salvation Army, those at Love Center, anywhere that there is a congregant group that could cause an outbreak of COVID, that will be next. Then our senior citizens, those that are 65 and over. We're hoping to get those started much sooner than nine to 14 days out. But, right now, that's still what we're looking at for them and then our general public. So, it's just taken a while to roll it out. Today's the first day. Riverview's still waiting on their vaccines for their employees and their affiliated doctors and doctors' offices. So, it started, the vaccines have started and that's, that's good news. But where we are as citizens, supporting our frontline providers and workers, is not good. You know, saw many, many, many Facebook posts where people weren't wearing face masks or weren't social distancing. And I know it's hard to do when you're at your own home, you want to be comfortable there. But I just encourage you, we've had so many heartbreaking stories that we've listened to here that we just encourage you, please, please. We had a family that there was no bed at a hospital and they ended up having to send their loved one to Georgia, where it was hard enough to send that loved one by themselves, but then that loved one passed away in another state all alone and it's devastating to the family. So, I just want to remind everyone, let's hang on just a little longer. Let's do the best that we can at trying to protect each other and ourselves. I know I am a broken record, but we're just asking for just a little bit more help for a little bit longer and, um, let's get through this. So, anybody have any questions? I don't, but I'd just like to say to you, Ms. Gaither, that you're not a broken record and what's so disappointing is to know that we always pride ourselves and number this, that, and the other and that here we are in a negative way, fourth in the nation with COVID. And so, your broken record is not a broken record, it's a true record, it's just that nobody's listening. Or, nobody as a whole is listening and they don't, and they're still in disbelief. But you know, I want to say this, COVID doesn't have but one name and that's COVID-19. Other than that, it has no skin color, it has no age limit, it has nothing but COVID-19 and it will take you out of here. So, continue to talk, maybe somebody will hear. I know people don't like what we say, but it's a fact that COVID kill. I'm just like you, I know family members, I keep going back to the three in the family. Here's a lady who had to sit up and watch a film, two hours apart, three members of her family and still people say it's not real. Yes, it's real. And so, we just have to trust and, and believe that eventually it will catch on, that they will hear you. And so, keep saying it over and over and over again. But I appreciate you, appreciate the first responders and all those that are taking care because they're putting their lives on the line also. And so, we thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What more can we do as elected officials? Because talking is not doing it. Is there anything else that we could do because our numbers are just going up, up? So, you know, as elected officials, as the mayor, what power do we have to do something different than what we're not doing now?
Right, and I don't know that there's anything different to do, other than setting an example and encouraging. And when you hear about, you know, an event that's going to take place, offer mask. I know someone was concerned about a Christmas food giveaway and I said, you know, I'd be glad to offer the gentleman a mask, but he's not doing anything wrong. He just needs to encourage them to social distance and wear masks and he did. I mean, he already had some masks, he was already working. Just be in contact with people when you hear it and say, look, do you need anything to make this safer? And if they do, let me know, we'll see what we have here and we can just try to provide the resource that they need to do things safely. A lot of times, it's that simple. And if we've heard about it, then we've tried to meet that need. So, if you can do that, listen out for us in the community and, and let us know when someone's having an event and we can touch base with them and see if there's a resource that they need.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you once again.
Thank you.
We will continue with our agenda. I'd like to, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting that was held December the 22nd. Did you get, did you get the?
I did, I got the second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote? Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
We now, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of December the 18th through the 24th.
So move.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote? Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay, we have the mayor on the line, but I'd asked him early, any proclamations? He said no, we didn't, he's on mute. Unfinished business, we have none today. Our first item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Federation and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Couche landing on January the 16th, 2021. And the amount is $3,000 or $40 per boat, whichever is less. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Bass Federation and Company and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Couche landing on February the 13th, 2021 and the amount is $2,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is another authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Nation and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Couche landing on March the 27th and the 28th, 2021 and the amount is $4,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Second.
Thank you, I had two motions, but no second there for a moment. Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Federation and Company and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament at Couche landing and this is on April the 10th, 2021 and the amount is $3,000 or $40 per boat, whichever is less, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. So move.
Need a second.
I actually have one. Councilman Reed.
Okay, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson. Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our last resolution is authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Trail and this is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament also at Couche landing for June the 19th, 2021 and the amount is $7,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All right, Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Back.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
New business, we have none, department reports. We have our Fire Chief Steve Carroll, he wants to give a report from Torres-Pasana and an announcement. Chief Carroll.
Is he on?
Is Chief Carroll available?
Chief Carroll is on, but it looks like we're having some, some audio difficulties. We have video, but I'm not hearing any, any audio.
I think he's queuing up some music.
Well, our next item would be remarks from the mayor and the council. So, while we're waiting on Chief Carroll, we'll, we'll, we'll start with District Two. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President, I really don't have anything. I just want to encourage everybody to be safe, continue to be safe and be smart as we, as we move into the new year. Again, I want to thank Deborah Gaither for, for, for her leadership and, and keeping us informed and focused as we, as we fight through this pandemic scenario. And as people bring in the new year, please be safe. Please be safe and please, please be smart. Do the right thing for both you and your family and anybody that you come into contact with. That's all I've got.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, I just want to say thank you to all that was involved with the Christmas dinner that we had. Thanks for everybody coming out. We also, we gave out masks, thanks to Craig Scott and also EMA, we gave out masks. He brought us another box of socks and masks and we gave, gave all of that out. And, you know, some people that was there didn't have a mask on and we gave it to them and told them to put it on and they, and they did, told them to social distance and they tried to. But, uh, a lot of people is hurting in the community and, you know, it was a meal, a hot meal. So, they were lining it up to get that hot meal. I think we fed about 300 people. So, uh, it was tough trying to keep them to social distance and, but at least they all had the mask on. So, and the ones that didn't have one, we gave them one. So, we want to say thank you to Tanya Baker and all involved in that. So, uh, we appreciate it. And thanks to Deborah Gaither for all the work that they are doing with EMA. Thank you.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam President, just wanted to kind of echo the sentiments of thanking our EMA staff, Deborah Gaither and all of her people, you know, they've been going at it pretty hard, probably seven days a week since sometime February, March. And along with all of our first responders, Fire Department, police, both hospitals, emergency rooms, I have quite a few friends that work at both hospitals and everybody's tired and worn out and I can understand why. So, just want to give them a note of thanks and I also want to just wish everybody a Happy New Year. Here we are on the 29th of December and really hoping that 2021 is going to be a much better year for everyone than 2020 was. What a, you know, this time last year, we could not have predicted what we'd be seeing or what we have seen with the pandemic and just all sorts of things happening in our city and our state and our nation and our world. And so, just grateful for what we have, grateful for how our community does come together here in all the, of the feeding programs that have been going on this during this pandemic and how churches have reached out and have helped many people. Just, just a note of thanks to those folks as well. And just hope everybody stays safe. As Councilman Williams said, do the right thing, wear your mask, social distance and try to limit your gatherings. So, Happy New Year, everybody, we'll see you again next year.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President, I don't have much to add, other than to just say thank you for all the volunteers that participated with Feed the Need. Each one of those bags we handed out fed seven people. So, we handed out 700 boxes on December the 23rd. We had about 50 people show up to help package those. Luckily, at Back Forty, we have a big old warehouse space, so everybody was able to space out and social. Space out and social distance and maintain those guidelines, and I happen to have about two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of hand sanitizer inside that building, so uh. Everybody was uh well sanitized throughout the process, so thanks for everybody who was able to come out and do that. Um, and the only other thing I'll add to the whole conversation about COVID is. Y'all, this is as elected official, probably one of the most frustrating things that I've ever dealt with. Because there's a double standard here, you know, when. When we as elected officials don't do what you as citizens expect us to do, y'all get to yell and scream and holler and call us awful names and. Uh, you know, and say all these ugly things about us and how we're stupid and we don't know what we're doing and. But when you guys don't do what we ask you to, you know, you got to understand, we sit on these COVID calls with medical professionals, first responders, EMA directors every single week. We have been doing this for almost a year. And for some reason, when you guys won't listen to us, we aren't allowed to say ugly things about you guys because that's not the way politics works, so. I'll hold my tongue and just say, please, 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 listen to the smartest people in the room about this. There are people way smarter than me and way smarter than you that are trying to give us guidelines that will protect us. And protect your fellow neighbors and citizens, so please, we're so close, we've got a vaccine already in distribution, we're finally getting vaccines. Here in Annapolis County, our first responders and our critical people in the, in this process are getting those vaccines right now, today, as we speak. So, we're so close, but we've, we, we're going to go. It's going to get worse before it gets better, so I just ask, please, try to maintain social distancing, wear your mask, sanitize, wash your hands, I mean, I still go out all the time. And when I need something, I'm, my wife and I are still able to go out uh to dinner occasionally, but when we do. We follow social distancing guidelines, we have sanitizer with us, we wear our mask continuously, so I'm not asking everybody to just. Lock themselves up in their house and do nothing, just be responsible when you're around other people and we'll all get through this, so um, that's all I have, thank you, Madam President.
Right, uh, Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Toles, I was just sitting here thinking today that uh. The city council and your mayor have been through a lot this past year, we've had the Board of Education, all those people came for it. We had Black Lives Matter, all the people came for it, then COVID's hit us, now we've got the rendering plant. All the people coming for it, I would just like for you, this next year, this coming new year, to please just pray about stuff, pray for your city council, pray for your mayor, pray for your city. Pray about everything, just, and whether it's to you, it's little, it's not little to God, just always pray for everything that you need. Uh, and everything you want, pray for each other, pray for people in the hospital, pray for everybody that has COVID, just make this next year just a year of prayer. And also for my house here, I just wish you a happy new year.
Okay, Councilman Reed.
Yes, I would. I would deto what Councilman Cannon said, and I want every member of this council to know that I am extremely. Very, very proud of each and every one of us, we've gone through some extreme things, we're going to have more coming next year, and I'm. Hoping that we stay in there, use our minds and everything we have equipped or equipped with and make the right decisions. Again, I'm really proud, and Mayor, I think you've been there good, but I appreciate every one of y'all. The city clerk's office, if we hadn't had them, y'all wouldn't even be here today, so them, the city employees, a very merry Christmas. And every, I say every year, I wish every day was Christmas Eve for the Fourth of July, we really have a, a good setup then, appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Rogers, have we been able to connect with uh Chief Carroll?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I've got him actually on the phone, and I think that we can, we can route around this, so Chief Carroll, if you want to go ahead.
Morning, everyone, this is Steve Carroll, I'm the fire chief for the city of Gaston. Uh, obviously, you don't want to see me today, and you didn't want to hear me today, so you're meeting me and everything today, so. But I'm glad to be here today, there's a couple of things I want to bring to you, you know, each and every year, we as a fire service do. A Toys for Santa program, and uh, we want to thank each and every person in the city that has contributed and sponsored our program this year. Uh, especially a few of our prominent uh sponsors, and I, if you give me a few minutes, I'd like to name a few of those. The Santa Claus Society, which is a major sponsor of us this year, and they didn't have a, a dance this year, but they came through with over six thousand dollars to our program this year, which we. Helped put us over the hump, uh, the Church of the Highlands always has a good sponsor, they give us toys and everything to help us in our toy drive. Uh, the Red Knights Motorcycle Club, the Gaston Country Club offers a, a devotional group, the each and every year, they have a. A breakfast and they give us proceeds off that breakfast and everything every year, we certainly appreciate them. The Annapolis Cherokee Association of Realtors, the Annapolis County Democratic. Uh, Women's Society, and I think Councilman Worthy come down and help when we presented this with a check from them. Uh, River View Regional Medical Center, uh Personnel Staffing. Uh, Team One Chevrolet of Gaston was one of our uh new sponsors this year and gave us a considerable amount of money of three thousand dollars this year as a sponsor, so. That helped tremendously for that, and one of our vendors, EMS vendors for the fire service, uh, Jamie Lee Port gave considerable amount of money of toys. To the, to the fire service. With all of those sponsorships and we, we weren't able to actually do many uh road uh blocks or uh. Uh, fundraising events this year due to the COVID nineteen, so uh, we did have one roadblock event. And everything turned out pretty good, we had to try and do it in a whole different manner, this whole year was a whole different. Uh, than every other year because we didn't actually uh go over to Walmart and let them, the. The parents get to shop this year, we tried to do it in a safe manner this year, where we just put toys in their car when they drove up in front of the uh. Uh, the venue, uh, we're using the vacant end of the venue down there to uh do some of our toy drive from. But we helped over three hundred and fifteen children this year and a hundred and six families, we thought that was great for the, this time of year. And to get that kind of help out, and we appreciate all of that uh. Help and sponsorship through the council and the mayor for allowing us to do this each and every year, and uh, and we certainly appreciate everything I'll do in that regards. Uh. The second thing I'm going, I'm going to tell you about, I'm, uh, if I'm, my voice starts breaking up or anything, it is, I'm going to blame it on the vaccine I had this morning, I. I'm, uh, but yeah, I come with a little heavy heart in telling you this, and I thought I'd never use that line. In my career and actually being able to tell anyone like that, but uh, I have talked to the mayor and, and everything, but I'm announcing my retirement. Again, that vaccine. Uh, February the first. Man, uh. You know, I don't do this. But uh, I've been in the fire service for forty-three and a half years and uh. And everything, and I, I've given a lot of hard thought, and, but I want to tell the mayor and the council that I certainly appreciate everything y'all done for me. I've been the uh, the chief here in this department for twenty, twenty-one and a half years and uh. And y'all have certainly supported me and helped me and, and everything that I have. Uh, offered to do it through the council and through the mayor, so I appreciate all your support. And everything and uh, and uh, and I certainly appreciate everything you've done for me, so. I just want to let you know that and, and everything, I wish we could have done it in person, but. Of course, this is the way we have to do things in today's society, is, is today, and that vaccine got there for a little while, so I'll just. Uh, apologize for that, but go ahead, but I appreciate each and everything y'all done, and that's, that's all I have to say today, thank you.
Uh, Chief Carroll, we want to thank you definitely for your service, you've put your life on the line. For all of these years, and we just appreciate everything that you've done for the city of Gaston. Uh, hate to see you go, but uh, I understand that, uh, want you to know that retirement is a beautiful thing. So, once you get adjusted, you will enjoy it. Uh, due to the uh, New Year's holiday, Thursday's garbage will be collected on Wednesday and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. And another emphasis that I would just like to say, um. Ms. Gaither made a point about the weather that's coming up, and she talked about the straight lines winds. That's something that we really, really need to be careful of because fallen trees are dangerous. They not only take lives, but they tear up homes, they tear up a lot of things, so we just need to be very careful during that time. And always stay tuned to the weather and what's going on. If there's nothing else.
I've got to say something, uh, Madam President, can I say one more thing, please?
Yes.
I just want to thank each of you, because I know uh, we may have our differences, but every time I come to you all. It's including the mayor to ask for money to do something in my district for us feeding, uh, everybody gives, so I just want to really say thank you. To each and every one of you, because not for you all, we wouldn't be able to do what we do uh in the community when it comes to feeding uh people that's in need, so uh, thank you.
Uh, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
We'll adjourn.